Ladies and gentlemen, welcome and good evening to the Rockingham County Planning Board regularly scheduled meeting for June 13th, 2022. I now call this meeting to order. At this time, the Chair calls upon Corey Scott for our invocation.
Mr. Frank. Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful to gather this evening in this Planning Board meeting to hear and consider the cases that are before the Board. And we are grateful to be able to serve the county and represent both the county leadership and the citizens of this county. Bless us that we might listen carefully, consider always the feelings and understand the hearts of the people who are here representing their feelings, and pray that we might come to decisions that will be in the best interest of all who are involved. May this, may thy blessings be upon the leadership of this county and help them in all that they do to make this a better place to live. In the name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Next item on the agenda is adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we adopt the agenda as written.
Seconded to adopt the agenda as written. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like sign. There's no opposition, so the agenda is adopted. Our next item is approval of the February 14th minutes.
One correction on the approval line that notified staff on it, just needs, there's an extra sentence in there, just needs removed.
Is that in the minutes, Jim?
The last page on the approval page, it's like about the seventh or eighth sentence down.
Right.
I made the motion for the application to be denied, and after that, there was an extra sentence put in there.
Correction noted.
And with that, I'll make a motion to approve.
It's been made and seconded to approve the minutes with the adjustment for the extra sentence. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like sign.
I'll abstain, because I was absent.
You can't abstain. You have to, you have to.
I'll accept then, as amended.
An abstaining vote counts as a yes vote, according to our bylaws. The motion carries, and the minutes are accepted. The next item on our agenda is a continuation of rezoning request 2022-08. Public comment on this matter was, or this case was heard at the June 9th meeting, and at the conclusion of the public comment period, which is, of course, now closed. Extra time was given for Mr. Arnt to get together with neighbors and, before he made his rebuttal. So now we'll call upon Mr. Arnt for his rebuttal.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Andrew Darcy. I'm with the law firm of Craig Jenkins, Liptford, and Walker in Winston-Salem, North Carolina. I represent Bill Arnt and Maxson.
Okay, for the record, we need the address of the firm, please.
110 Oakwood.
Thank you.
Suite 300, Winston-Salem, North Carolina.
Please proceed.
So I kind of want to start with a, if not us, who? If not now, when? Right now, my client is focused on making a substantial investment into this community for generations to come. And its plan meets the requirement of the UDO and the Vision Plan, as we've combed over for the last month, trying to plan for what we consider a huge benefit for this community. After our last meeting, we took public comment at the suggestion of you all, and we have, went over and above with talking to the Department of Transportation ahead of even getting an approval for the rezoning from agriculture to residential mixed. And with that, you know, I hope that you guys understand that we're going to be working with the community time and time again after this. This is just the beginning, and you guys are going to have a voice in the say with the community, with the development. And, you know, I just want to make sure that everybody understands that the goal here today is that this is just the starting point. We meet the requirements of what's required for the rezoning, and with the specifics of it, I want to leave that up to my client to kind of take and address any questions that you guys may continuously have. Thank you.
Mr. Arnt, did you want to speak?
Just on some of the camp care free. I'm Bill Arnt. I live in Summerfield, North Carolina, 7291. Of course, you guys all know me. We were here not too long ago. I took your advice and met with all these folks at Camp Care Free, which was very nice that Rhonda had allowed us to all meet there. There was a lot of topics of discussion. Main concerns were traffic and emergency services, which I absolutely understand that. We've already reached out to the Department of Transportation, which I think Andrew alluded to, and we're going to work ourselves towards, if we are able to, work towards TRC to see what the Department of Transportation is going to, you know, require us to do with regards to upgrades or turn lanes, D cell lanes, whatever, you know, we need to do on our end, because we feel very positive about this project. And when you look at the map that's in the booklets that I provided, that I had 112 units of townhomes to the north, and I shrunk it to 85, which I know that seems like a lot, but the townhomes themselves, I think, is going to be a really neat product for Rockingham County that we haven't seen in a really long time up here. The single family will feed into Noonam Road, and how DOT chooses through the TRC process for me to handle that, then that's what I'll have to do. And that's really all there is to it. I just need to be able to put myself in a position to be able to get there. That's really all there is. But like I said, the meeting that we had on May 18th was a really good one. A lot of folks came and spoke. The fire chief was there, which was good. And I got a lot of just positive feedback with regards to what I need to be working on to make this happen. So I'll just leave it at that.
Okay. Is there any questions for Mr. Arnt?
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Arnt, in, I'm assuming that you've looked at the county land use plan?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. In looking at the county land use plan, how do you see this project, how does it fit into this plan, understanding what the long-term goal for growth and development in Rockingham County is, particularly within that corridor? How do you see this develop, or this project fitting into that plan?
Well, from my perspective, based on the plan that's been provided, it fits directly in with what it's asking for. Part of the reason, just to be completely transparent, part of the reason I'm asking for the zoning that I am asking for is, do I feel like there are other opportunities in that corridor other than just a bunch of residential homes? Yes, absolutely, I do. But I don't know that. I don't have that crystal ball. That's why I'm asking for residential mixed use, right? So that allows us, as a company, to possibly change some things, that kind of thing, to make it fit and be a better fit for Rockingham County. So I don't know if that answered your question, but that's where I'm going.
Yeah, and I'm sort of asking for a vision. You know, the land use plan certainly is a vision of what we do moving forward. And I'm, as we hear these cases and as we weigh what's best for the county and the citizens of the county, I'm trying to get a really good idea of what your vision of how, how does this, how will this help us accomplish what we want to accomplish in Rockingham County?
Well, I think the part of this project that I'm most excited about are the townhomes. And I really do feel like, like I said, I took it down from 112 units because it looked like something you'd throw in the middle of Charlotte. It was terrible. So I took it down to 85 units so I could maintain some view corridors, have some exterior common areas and amenities and things like that to make it be a place that people want to live. And the same for the southern part of the north, of the North Noonam piece, because we're currently under construction on the south side of Noonam Road. And I think that will blend everything together. I would like to keep them separate, in my opinion, just from a traffic perspective, so we don't have all these people running straight to Noonam Road. But my vision for the townhomes is a nice country feel, but it's still a product that people can afford to live in. And that's what it is. That's my vision for this project.
Thank you. You've answered my question.
No problem.
Any further questions for Mr. Arnt? Thank you, sir. As we begin our discussion, I want to remind everyone that the requested zoning map changes have to be consistent with North Carolina General Statute 160D, the county's 2021 Land Use Plan, and Unified Development Ordinance. And that these changes are just the first in a series of reviews and approvals that move this project forward. The Technical Review Committee will review the site plans and technical items related to, but not limited to, later development approvals, including transportation concerns, environmental issues, and county services. Now, the TRC is comprised of professional staff and other agency members, such as the North Carolina Department of Transportation, county schools, emergency services, and the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality. My best recollection is that there's 14 voting members on the TRC. The process is lengthy, and it's extremely detailed, and addresses every aspect of infrastructure that would be associated with a project of this size, or any size for that matter. Also, I want to remind you all that even though the period of public comment on this matter is closed, there will be another period of public comment when this matter comes before the county commissioners on July 18th. So anyone that feels like they weren't given an adequate opportunity to express their concerns regarding this application can certainly voice those concerned at the commissioners' meeting on July 18th. That being said, is there any discussion among the Board? Doesn't appear to be any further discussion. At this time, we'll entertain a motion then. Chair recognizes Mr. James Fink.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of this rezoning request to rezone the specified parcels on the rezoning application to the requested zoning district based on the consistency and reasonable determination statements that are included in the Planning Board agenda submitted during the rezoning presentation, and as may be amended, incorporated into the motion, be included in the minutes.
I second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the application for case number 2022-08. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like sign. There's no opposition, so the motion carries. Before we get to the next cases, please understand the following. Zoning map changes reviewed by the Planning Board are legislative matters. These map changes are reviewed for reasonableness and consistency with North Carolina General Statute 160D, the county's 2021 Land Use Plan, and the Unified Development Ordinance, among other adopted plans. When making a decision, we consider the recommendations of planning staff and the public comments. When applicable, this Board reviews potential land uses requested by the applicant. Planning Board decisions are forwarded to the Board of Commissioners as recommendations. The Board of Commissioners will hold a public meeting before making a final decision whether to approve or deny a zoning map change recommended by the Planning Board. A zoning map change is the first in a series of reviews and approvals that move a project forward. The Technical Review Committee, also known as the TRC, reviews the site plans and technical items related, but not limited to, later development approvals, including transportation concerns, environmental issues, and county services. The TRC is comprised of professional staff and other agency members, such as NC DOT, county schools, emergency service, and the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality. Each case on the agenda requesting a zoning map change will be presented to the Planning Board by a member of the planning staff. Following the staff presentation, the case applicant will be given the opportunity to brief the Board regarding the case. Following the applicant's presentation, the Planning Board will provide a public comment period. All persons who would like to speak during the public comment period regarding any rezoning case being heard by the Planning Board must sign the case file roster located at the entrance of these chambers prior to the beginning of the meeting. The public comment period is not a forum for dialogue or debate with the Planning Board. The express purpose of the public comment period for the Planning Board to receive additional facts, comments, and opinions regarding a request to change the zoning map. The chairperson will open the public comment period. Speakers will be called in the order in which they signed up. The chairperson reserves the right to set time limits for each speaker. In the event time limits are imposed, a speaker called may yield this time to another speaker. However, no speaker will be permitted to exceed twice the limit imposed. No speakers are allowed to address the Planning Board twice during the public comment period. When recognized, each person signed up to speak will do so in a civil manner from the podium. Before beginning to speak, the chairperson will ask that you provide your name and address for the record. Unless otherwise directed, all testimony, evidence, or comments shall be directed to the Planning Board, not to staff or the audience. If you agree with an argument for or against a request to change to the zoning map already presented by another speaker, please practice the courtesy of indicating as much when you are called to speak. Comments or outbursts from the audience are not permitted. After all speakers have been heard, the chairperson will close the public comment period. The applicant will then be given the opportunity for rebuttal. This will be followed by board discussion, motions, and voting. That being said, staff will now present our next case, which is rezoning request 2022-10.
Wrote that. I'm picking on your levity. You're the one who wrote that.
Maybe we should get a recording for you for each time to save it.
Right, right.
We're big poster.
Our first case.
Clear, everyone?
Please don't ask us if we tested. If there's no pop quiz.
What's next? Afterwards, you guys are getting 10 questions. You ready? Okay. Our first case tonight is number 22-11. It's a request for a zoning map change.
20-10.
2022-11, sorry. Correct. 10.
Typo.
Typo. You were supposed to have read these.
I caught the other four.
Yeah, okay. 10. Mr. Ricky Roberts has applied, I have not typed it correctly, for a rezoning from, no, it's not, it's 11. Maxson is 10.
Yeah, it's wrong on the agenda.
It's wrong, sorry. Yeah, okay. It's like, wait a minute, I was feeling bad. It was a request for rezoning from residential protected to residential agricultural, located at 4035 Ellisboro Road, Huntsville Township. It's a straight rezoning. Mr. Roberts was here, but his mother was with him, and she was not feeling well, so he took her home. I assured him that I could explain his request. This is the vicinity map, way down in the southwest corner of the county where Ellisboro approaches Guilford. This is the zoning map in the area. It's actually a bit of a mix of zoning. This parcel is contiguous when you account the parcel across the street, which is the general rule, to two parcels that are zoned residential agricultural. All of these areas were zoned RP and RA, for the most part, at the advent of zoning, when the ordinance was first laid out back in the late 80s, early 90s. It is located just in a bit of the Dan River Madison watershed, otherwise there aren't any specific or worrisome environmental features. I blew up the land use plan map a little bit, because it is in the O2 land class, but it's just outside the bubble of the G2 land class and just south of an area of G1, but technically it's in the O2 land class, which is specifically supported by the land use plan for zoning to residential agricultural, primarily low-density, single-family residential uses, and the land use plan guidance that most areas in the O2 land class should be zoned, residential areas should be zoned residential agricultural, and the housing variety is targeted as a major goal of the land use plan, which is the particular concern of the applicant, access to more housing options that are allowed in the RP district, which we've seen quite a few hearings about over the last eight to 10 months. So I'll be glad to answer any questions.
By moving to residential mixed, could you go back a little bit? Isn't there some residential mix just to the north of this?
Sure. There is. In these areas, let me see if it'll show up a little bit better on the photography. Those residential mixed areas on the photography, as you can see, are a mix of manufactured housing and perhaps one or two single-family houses. It's a little bit small on the format there, but if you, you should be able to see it, I hope. You see that?
Yep, yep.
So if we go back to that residential mixed area to the north, that's there, and then the residential mixed area to the south down Angeline Drive is also similarly primarily manufactured housing.
Was there any comment, excuse me, any comments received prior to the meeting?
I received no calls or comments. Do you recall any? I know. Okay. I didn't think we had had any.
Any questions for Mr. Cochran?
Chairman?
Corey Scott.
So the fact that there's already manufactured housing on the property?
Yes. Mr. Roberts, I asked him about that, explained it to me. This, in short, apparently this was the situation. He had the home purchased and was sitting on a rental lot at the, just prior to making the application for this rezoning. And if he did not get it off the lot, he was going to begin to have to pay like this accelerated rental fee. I didn't know that part. I do apologize. And so to avoid having to do that, he simply moved the two pieces of the manufactured home that he had already purchased from where he had purchased it to the land, which is in his name, and did not put the pieces together. That's not necessarily allowed by the Unified Development Ordinance. But since we are in the process of making an effort to rezone, to get him to the point where he would need to be in a case like that, we would generally work with someone. Let's say if someone got a notice of violation about a structure being in violation for whatever reason, and either something like a rezoning or a variance or something like that would fit, or special use permit might remedy the situation, and it was a possibility, once we began that process, we would just monitor and hold violations as long as the person is working towards the goal of righting the situation.
So he's making a good faith effort to comply with the regulations. Now, it's not connected, they're just the two pieces that are sitting there.
Right, right. Yep. Change your great picture. Show me.
So in your opinion, because he's making a good faith effort, you're comfortable?
That's general practice with planning and zoning violations, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Cochran? Thank you very much. Appears to be pretty straightforward what the applicant is asking for here. Is there any discussion, further discussion? Then we can move to a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion. I make the motion to recommend approval of this rezoning request to rezone the specific parcel on the rezoning application to the requested zoning district based on the consistency and reasonableness determination statements that are included in the agenda submitted during the rezoning presentation, and as may be amended, incorporated into the motion to be included in the minutes.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to approve a rezoning request for case number 2022-10.
It's 11. It is 11.
Oh, it is 11. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like sign. There's no opposition, so the Planning Board will recommend to the county commissioners that the application for case number 2022-11 be approved.
May I ask who seconded?
Corey.
Corey Scott.
I blinked out.
Could we have our next case, please? And I'm afraid to announce the number, because it's probably going to be.
This is 12.
It's wrong on the agenda cover page, but it's right everywhere else.
And I'll leave it up to you all at the Board if you need to re-adopt the agenda with the corrected.
Nah.
Yeah, that was, the agenda is a typo. All the case numbers in the slides and all the, these are good.
As long as the Attorney General does not come after us, we're fine.
Yeah.
We have a second editor now. She's gonna be helping, and it's gonna get better, I promise. By the way, how about Marzy's new reasonableness and consistency statement? Right? We love it. Right?
That's me, I thought you were gonna ask.
It cycles its way every couple of months.
I was very happy for you guys, and for me, too. And I told my Paul, right?
Sorry, Paul.
Our second case for the evening is case, is case 2022-12, a request for a zoning map amendment, rezoning from residential agricultural to rural commercial. This is located at 5177 US 220 Business in the Mayo Township. It's a straight rezoning request. I met with Mr. Chavez and his family. I met with Mr. Chavez and his family. The, among the uses allowed in the rural commercial district when the UDO was updated is now a rural family occupation. And a rural family occupation allows sort of the history of what we've known as rural family occupations for board members who've been around for a while that used to be allowed in RA district. They're no longer allowed in RA district because we have the cottage business permit. So we issued those at the administrative level, and part of that was to take burden off of the planning board. But there are also other uses listed in there, but the primary use that the applicant is seeking, even though this is not a conditional rezoning, is the operation of a rural family occupation. You can see here, it's just north of Stoneville, off of US Business two twenty up there. There's some industrial zoning and a little bit of residential protected. To the south, that little area of purple, even though that color is, purple is actually not industrial zoning. It's just the map overlap of the Stoneville ETJ, the way my colors worked on the map when I produced it. I just did want to point that out. So there's a few mix of uses in the area. But the nature of the rural family occupation is that it should sort of be located in a rural area, which this is, of course, being north of Stoneville. Here's a little bit closer. You can see how it sort of straddles the Mayo River watershed and the Dan River Eden watershed. No other significant environmental features. You'll see if you look under the pink stripes, several little dots. At present, and I believe I mentioned this in the staff report, there is a commercial structure that the applicant will be working out of for his rural family occupation. There are also currently four sort of non-conformed but allowed grandfathered manufactured homes. As these manufactured homes become into disrepair, they'll then be removed from the property because they won't be allowed to stay as continuing uses beyond that, and lives of manufactured homes are limited. So the applicant understands that and agrees. This is the future land use map. It's not far, actually, from the eastern border of the US two twenty corridor, being here on US two twenty business and again just outside of the Stoneville ETJ. Again, this is located in O-two land class, usually characterized by low-density residential development, open lands, and limited commercial uses focused on redevelopment of vacant and underused commercial spaces. This is approximately point three miles due east of the eastern border of two twenty, which I pointed out. And land use policies O-two point four encourages reuse of existing commercial structures that have been underused and/or vacant. The Unified Development Ordinance clarif, I'm not going to read this to you, but sort of defines the rural commercial district in this fashion so that they remain fitting within the rural setting. And I'll stop there and answer any questions for you.
Any questions for Mr. Cochran regarding this case? Corey Scott.
So the, so when I went to the property, you know, there's, is the intent of this property to create a car lot or something because there was like a, there's like one, two, I counted about eight, nine, 10 cars on the property?
It's not, it used, sales of cars and car parts are not allowed in the rural commercial district. However, there are the umbrella coverages given by the rural family occupation that make what I believe his plans are for it suitable, which is salvaging of parts and removal of parts and sale, and then removing vehicles from the property. That's how the intent was described to me by the applicant and his family.
And you indicated there were four.
I believe four manufactured homes.
So there's, well, I can, I count, there's three because I took, went, you know.
If you saw three, I trust you because I was looking at photography and you went there.
Well, there is one, it's really small, looks more like a shed. And then there's a building that's demolished. It looked like.
Is removing from the property.
Okay.
He's in the process of demoing and removing from the property. I do recall that. One of the manufactured homes is to be used by someone who will act as supervisor and sort of.
Getting that.
Overseer of the site, yeah.
Because two of them look like they're not, they weren't suitable to live in. I mean, they were pretty, pretty difficult.
As far as I know, they're all inhabited at this point. Condemnation procedures for manufactured homes, I wouldn't venture into because that's not within our purview. That's code enforcement purview. Generally, as long as there aren't any reported or noticeable building violations, that's not something that we would pursue, obviously, because we're, you know, complaint-based. But my understanding is that they are actually all occupied at this point by either family members or friends. But that's, again, what I was told by the applicant.
Okay.
Yeah.
There were cars parked in all, in front, and there were cars.
In front of each.
In addition to the non-working cars that were in the property.
And if I can, real quick, the one phone call I received about this, that I received, I think we got two phone calls, was concerned with the nature of those vehicles. As Lynn pointed out, those would not be allowed to be there if the, under a rural family occupation either. So they're gonna have to go. All the, 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 the non-moving vehicles, everything, they can't be a storage yard, basically. So that, you know, has been explained and discussed. But since this is a straight rezoning, all those elements, you know, we can talk about them, but they can't be used to consider your decision. But those things are being taken into account and figured out for this, this particular request.
I think the reason I'm asking the question, I wanted to make sure that if we move it to the, to the RC, that, you know, that those requirements associated with that are going to be.
Right.
Are going to be there and enforced.
Yes.
RC is our most strict commercial district. And there's very little that can happen there because it is intended to retain that rural character. What is allowing this actually even be considered is the fact that it was, in fact, I believe some type of commercial operation before they put the mobile homes on there, is best I can determine, based on that building, whether that was actually like a mobile home park building.
Like an old gas station.
Yeah, something like that. So it's an unused vacant commercial structure. That's how it stays consistent with our land use plan. Whether what they end up using it for and get a permit for is applicable or not, we won't know until they apply for that permit.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Will enforce the rules of the zoning category. Yeah.
I went out, too, and I actually, what struck me were the vehicles sitting there that I didn't even see the structure of that. I thought the tornado tore it down. I didn't know it was a, I mean, I really did.
Yeah.
And I thought, in fact, I thought the whole property had been destroyed by the tornado. So. And, so he, I'm really confused about this case. I'm surprised that. I don't have, I don't really know how much to say because it's so, I don't want to step out of bounds, but.
Sure, no, no. Well, let me give you a little context. So Marzy and I actually talked about this quite a bit between ourselves, also referencing the Unified Development Ordinance, referencing the land use plan, speaking with the applicant, his family. He needs an interpreter, Mr. Chavez. He doesn't speak English very well. And talking to him about what the past uses of the parcel are and the intent of his uses are. And we looked at multiple sort of scenarios. We thought about the idea of a light industrial rezoning, which probably would have been okay because there is light industrial across the street. But that's kind of old zoning that probably might not necessarily have been appropriate for the area at the time. So we wanted to find the right path for him that would have the least impact. And with the rezoning, the condition of a property as it is prior to any rezoning isn't necessarily something that, I mean, I guess it can be taken into consideration, but isn't something necessarily, I don't believe, that should weigh heavily on the case for rezoning. Because of his intentions to, the improvements that he intends to make to the property once the rezoning has, if it's approved, once the rezoning is approved, quote unquote. Does that help at all?
That's with no conditions. We can't do, okay.
Yeah.
Can I ask one more question? So there's six mailing addresses on this parcel.
I verify that. So if you think so, I trust you.
Well, I'm looking at the.
Addresses.
Yeah, there's six mailing addresses. So, you know, so what, so we have an address in the application, which is probably the building, based on what it says shows on the map, is the building that's being demolished. But we're considering rezoning the entire part.
It wouldn't be the entire parcel, yeah.
Is that creating any confusion in terms of the fact that there's six mailing addresses in that?
And there are people living there. I'm, that's, that's what's, I'm getting caught up on that as well.
I hear you. I hear you.
It would be creating a non-conformity with the residential part. That's why we've expressed to Mr. Chavez that they would definitely have to be removed as they age out. Not to, not to, we don't want to, we don't want to, we don't want to put anyone on the streets because we rezoned something.
Right.
That's why we, we think as long as, it becomes a legally non-conforming situation. And once the non-conformity becomes a point where it can't be improved, it has to be removed. And that's the situation we'd be creating here. If, if y'all decide to go forward with it. But that, that's where that comes from. But there's no, there's no qualms with multiple addresses on the same property. It happens in a lot of places.
Oh, they've been there for a long time, too.
And there's a lot of, what I would consider antiquated non-conformities here. Most likely, it never should have, it shouldn't have been zoned RA to begin with when we zoned things in eighty-eight. It should have been, it's, you should have been taken into consideration at that point. However, you know, as Lynn's been explaining, looking at it as a whole site and what it'd be doing for the area, we are trying to minimize any impact of rezoning, and we are trying to fix what's been going on there, which has been non-compliant and not legally non-conforming. It's just non-conforming with those cars and everything. This is that, that method of getting to the point where it becomes a compliant property in the future.
So your intent of this is to get rid of all of this non-compliance weird stuff and get it down into something that's, that is compliant with the UDO?
Right, as it progresses, yes. Without putting anybody out on the streets.
Ambiguity in the ordinance, too, that, that there is also allowed in the rural commercial district, a live-work unit. Most would interpret that as a single structure in which one lives and may have a small office or a small shop. But that could be also sort of transposed onto this parcel where you've got someone who's going to be living there, who is working on the parcel in a separate structure. And because of these, one way to think about it is, let's say we were looking at a parcel that we were going to rezone from RA to neighborhood commercial, and there were two houses on it. But the fact that the homes exist there, it's going to be a while before those homes get removed and it actually gets to the point where it's ready for development with the allowed uses in the neighborhood commercial zoning district. This is kind of like that, too. If that helps make a little more sense out of it. Yeah. It's a bit, it is a bit convoluted way of doing things, but it's a way of doing it, as Marzy mentioned, to try to minimize the impacts of what he's trying to do.
Nobody homeless.
Yeah. Nope.
That's been our qualm since the very beginning of looking at this whole process is finding that balance. And we think we found it with the rural commercial, honestly.
We, we, I think we discussed this back and forth for like six weeks. I mean, this went back and forth for quite a while.
Stepping stone for him to do something more with the property?
He could, he would be allowed any uses in the rural commercial district with a straight rezoning. But as Marzy noted, the allowed uses in the rural commercial district are a tiny percentage of those that are allowed in either neighborhood or highway commercial. And all are extremely limited in impact. They generally almost all focus on agricultural uses or agricultural equipment sales or service or something like that. This would certainly be in his best interest.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Would help him.
No matter what we do, it becomes a code, it would be a code enforcement issue at some point.
Correct. It already is. And that's why he came in and sat down and talked with us.
Code enforcement's the one who brought the cars to our attention. That's what brought in the, the fact that there is a business there currently that should not be there.
Yeah, to try to reach.
And that's what we're trying to work with, is to refine whatever he's doing and make sure that what he does do is compliant with the rules while at the same time improving his opportunities to do what he wants to do.
Questions? There's no one signed up, like our last case, there's no one signed up to speak on this case, so there won't be any public comment, period. We therefore can move to further discussion amongst ourselves or go directly to motion.
Let's discuss. I'm having a hard time with this one. I mean, it's a crapshoot. Because if you, it's clearly in violation. I have grave concerns that there, the, the living, what's, what's living there and, you know, what, what's going to happen to those parts of it. People probably should not be living there, but, I mean, what do you do? You don't want to leave anybody homeless. That's, I'm just having a real hard time. And if he, you know, if there weren't any like dwellings on this thing to begin with, it'd be a little bit easier for us to, to at least rationalize some parts of it. But the fact that it's already in violation, it's, the, the building is obviously falling in or has fallen in or something. I just, I don't have a whole lot of confidence.
Consider that, consider that if we didn't make the zoning change, what would the county enforcement people have to do? So it. Well, they, I mean, they would literally have to force, I mean, first off, those trailers could stay on the property, right? In RA?
Yes.
The grandfathered.
The whole situation with those, the trailers currently are legally non-conforming. There's, however many of them are still on the property, they were there previously, they're fine to stay there currently, even if it stays RA. To follow your reasoning there, for us, if this, you know, you're, you're welcome to recommend denial. Like I said, we're trying our, our best to make an omelet with some broken eggs here. But regardless of what you do, he's going to have some code enforcement actions if he doesn't come into compliance with the vehicles anyway, and whatever business operations are currently going on there. So it's either, you know, if, if you go the route of non-rezoning, we are doing code enforcement. If we go the route of rezoning, we may still be doing code enforcement. So, you know, that, you're right, it's a crapshoot. We're not invested in this one way or the other. It can be consistent with our plan. It can be reasonable with the area. We've been able to determine that. However, is it suitable? That's for, you know, y'all to decide and move forward with.
Mr. Chair, can we hear from code enforcement? Would he like to weigh in?
I believe the, the code enforcement officer that does that is Bryson, and he's not here. That's Bryson's side of the county.
Sounds to me like approving this application gives the applicant more incentive and a better chance to come into conformity with all the code violations than if we just let it deny and let it sit as it is. And the one thing that you get with approving it is that as those, to use Marzy's words, as those trailers age out, they have to be removed. Where if they're RA, if it's left RA, I don't know what.
And I guess where I'm, where I'm having a hard time is what is, what is my primary concern here? And I'm, do I, am I concerned with keeping him motivated to keep the property up and to do something with it? Or am I, is my concern making sure that people have a place to live? And it doesn't seem to me that passing, that approving this is going to impact those, that housing situation for people until he decides that they're in disrepair or somebody else decides they're in disrepair and they're made to move them. I don't, I, I'm really, really stuck on this.
If I'm, sorry, real quick, if I may on that one, even if it stays RA, since they're legally non-conforming, when they age out, then have to be removed, they can't be replaced.
Right.
Now, manufactured housing and their minimum housing code and stuff that's different than different, other structures, it's a lot more difficult to enforce that on, on those structures. At the same time, when you can't repair them, you can't repair them and they're gone. So that's six, one half dozen the other. So that's six, one half dozen the other at this case, because they're not, if they're not on individual lots, and it's not a registered mobile home park, they couldn't be replaced in either circumstance, as RA or RC.
Mr. Chair. I have numerous concerns. One, I don't know how close these are to aging out, but I'm, I'm thinking that they may have already aged out. The other part is, I'm concerned that he's not here, and I'm concerned what he, what he, what he, if he has full leeway, no conditions, and I know it goes through a different review process, of what he would do to help the property. So if it's voted, if it's a denial, the housing part, the residential, doesn't change until it ages out.
Either way, it doesn't change until they age out.
Either way, it doesn't change, that's right. So, and who determines when it's aged out, when it's time for the--
Code enforcement.
So if somebody, if somebody, and is that complaint driven? If you say you need to go look at these? Okay.
What that said, Ben, did you want to?
I can answer that for you, either way.
Thank you.
Either way, your rule on this, this location, we'd get a call on this, for like a follow-up or anything like that. We'd, we'd get another complaint to this location, this, we've been going to this, this location for multiple years.
Three more questions, okay. All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Ben.
And Cindy, I did just want to point out, one of the reasons I believe the applicant is not here is because he has a language barrier. I don't know if he was not able to be, a family member has been speaking for him, who's a little bit younger. And would you repeat your first concern again for me, because there was a point I wanted to help you out with?
My first concern was that why these haven't already been deemed the residential?
So he, Mr. Curry addressed that, and--
And then I was concerned about what he might do or not do.
Right.
No conditions on the rezon--
And what I wanted to follow that up with, that in the Unified Development Ordinance, there are required standards for all districts outside of single-family residential and multifamily residential for development standards. Landscape screening that must apply, fencing that might apply, multiple items that are required for a rural commercial, neighborhood commercial, or highway commercial property that are required components of the ordinance, things that he'll have to install, if that helps.
So if he, no matter what he does with this piece of property, since the building is pretty much falling in, he's going to have to come back and meet, meet the ordinances and the code to begin with.
Yep.
Okay, so, so by definition, there is going to be, there will be a lot of conditions. It's, it's not going to be completely unconditional. You, we, he's going to have to follow the code.
There are still rules and codes in the ordinance, yeah.
Yeah, he's going to either have to build or renovate to code.
Right.
Okay. Okay.
And he had to get a building permit and other things to--
That helps.
To replace the structure that he--
Okay. I can reconcile that now.
So I have one more, I have one more question. So part of the, the thinking in this is that the rural commercial is, is that it fits in with the agricultural kind of thing, and car parts doesn't seem to fit that model?
Car parts themselves and the salvaging and picking and sales of car parts is not allowed in the rural commercial district, and that's not what's been described to me by the applicant and his family. We'll see. That's not what's been described.
Are we ready for motions? Somebody like to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion to recommend approval of this rezoning request to rezone the specified parcel on the rezoning application to the requested zoning district based upon the consistency and reasonableness determination statements that are included in the agenda submitted during the rezoning presentation and, as may be amended, incorporated into the motion to be included in amendments.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve this application. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like, sign. The motion carries on a vote of five to one, with Ms. Hayworth in opposition. Our next case is-- We just have no numbers besides 12. We have 10, 11, and--
13.
Oh, you got, you're going to 13 now, okay.
Hey. My agenda's just wrong. This should be quite a simple request, once I describe it to you a little bit. This is 2022-13, request from, for rezoning, zoning makeup amendment, from RA to LI, residential, agricultural to light industrial. It's 4300 NC Highway 65, New Bethel Township, it's a straight rezoning. This is the transcontinental pipeline station area, located in this area of the Bethany community. Zoning map, I structured it exactly this way because it's this teeny tiny little parcel that had been in other ownership and zoned RA for a long time, that the applicant has now acquired and would like to rezone and incorporate into what is otherwise the very large transcontinental pipeline site here that you can see is, takes up a much larger area of the parcel in the photography. It lies just outside of a G1 land class. It is in the O-2 land class, however, whether or not this is appropriate to have zoned light industrial whenever it was, usually a public utility gains a much higher level of leniency in certain districts, and certainly did in the past in older ordinances. Since this is zoned, it is certainly in conformance with the zoning matrix in the area. Even though it might not necessarily fit in with the current land use plan, it has fit in with land use plans of the past. I did not include an environmental map, because there aren't even any significant environmental features to consider. It's in the O-2 land class. As noted, appropriate expansion of existing commercial and industrial uses in the O-2 land class would be supported by O-2 Policy 4, economically, at all goals focused on expanding industrial opportunities as well as continuing to promote and develop existing industrial sites, pointing to the fact that, you'll note in your staff report, that we did make note that this is not directly supported by the land use plan and future land use plan, but because of the historical context of the area and zoning, we felt it an appropriate request for consideration and recommend approval.
Any questions for Mr. Cochran? Any discussion?
I motion to approve.
You didn't read the whole--
You need to recite the appropriate text, please.
Yeah, I got to read it.
Get down for you now, come on.
No fast ones here.
Just shrunk it again.
I make the motion to recommend approval of this recording, rezoning request to rezone the specified parcel on the rezoning application to the requested zoning district based on the consistency and reasonableness determination statements that are included in the agenda submitted during the rezoning presentation and, as may be amended, incorporated into the motion to be included in the minutes.
Second. Has been made and seconded to approve the application for case number 2022-13. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like, sign. There's no opposition, so the planning board approves the request and will recommend that the county commissioners do so as well. That concludes the rezoning request cases for this evening. Do we have any new business? There doesn't seem to be any listed, nor is there any old business. So at this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting. Motion has been made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Meeting is adjourned. Safe travels on your way home, please keep it under 90.